The August 15th, 2019 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Delapietro?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Tamburello?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
Mr. Treewasser?
Here. Before we go to the next step, I just figured, I see a lot of people here, and I believe that most of you are here because of the Woodbridge Middle, Woodbridge High rumors. So normally, we hold this until the end of the meeting, and it's a beautiful day, and I would hate to waste everybody's time. You are certainly all welcome to stay, and I am very thrilled that the rest of the board is to have this much parental involvement. But just so everybody's aware and clear, and hopefully this will put your minds at rest, we have been told by the construction company that the Woodbridge Middle School will be opening on time. That is their expectation. That is also our expectation. However, the administration of the district, with the support of the board, recognizes that their promises are wonderful, but we want to make sure we have contingency plans in place. Dr. Zega did go to the schools and tell them that there was a potential that we may have an alternative solution in place, and did mention that there could be split sessions. From that, we now have split sessions guaranteed for the rest of the life of the schools. That is not going to happen. There are several contingency plans that are in place. The least favorable in any of our decisions is to do split sessions. Our ideal goal is to have both schools, Woodbridge High and Woodbridge Middle, be able to have the same educational and robust instructional time that they would have had the school been open. So if that helps you at all, I hope you enjoy the rest of the evening. If that doesn't help, and you have questions you want to ask later on in the public portion, you're certainly welcome to stay. Thank you. Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to note, Ms. Bordain is here, and we missed her when we started the roll call.
Okay. Thank you.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted as follows: January 4, 2019, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Allenell Middle School, and the Board of Education Administration Building.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Delapietro, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. Discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters. Additionally, the Board will receive attorney advice regarding administrator contracts. Any information regarding the closed session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
I have a motion by Mr. Delapietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Molnar. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. We'll return as soon as we're done with closed session. Please rise for a salutant flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to reconvene?
Sub motion.
I have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sedana. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Bordain?
Here.
Mr. Delapietro?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Tamburello?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
Mr. Treewasser?
Here. Will someone make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
Sub motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Delapietro. Are there any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notice of bids received by the Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. July 23rd, 2019, IFB 20-11 for CMA Dish Machines Conveyor Type Dishwasher or Alternate Accessories and Installation at the JFK High School. July 25th, 2019, IFB 20-12 Special Education Student Transportation to and From School. And on July 30th, 2019, IFB 20-13 Student Transportation to and From School.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Dr. Zega, do you have any recommendations this evening?
Mr. President, I have seventeen items to present to the Board.
Do I have a motion for the superintendent's agenda?
Sub motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson. Any comments or questions from the Board? Any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes. Policy and Planning, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools recommends the following five items. I move for the adoption before going.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tamburello. Any comments or questions from the Board? Any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes. Curriculum Agenda, Mr. Harris? Thank you, Mr. Treewasser. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction present the following twenty-five items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson. Before we go to comments from the Board, we're going to have a presentation by Mr. Bader regarding the 2019 Advanced Places Analysis and Benefit. Mr. Bader, if you'd be so kind?
Woodbridge School District, 2019 Advanced Placement Analysis and Benefit. In 2019, twenty-seven subject area AP exams were offered in the three high schools. Fourteen-hundred-and-seventy AP tests were taken by seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven students in May of 2019. The All-In Campaign increased equity and access by evaluating student potential for participation in AP and district potential for expanding AP offerings with the focus on including underrepresented students. AP test results for 2019, colleges usually grant credit for AP scores of three, four, or five. Eight-hundred-and-twenty-three out of fourteen-hundred-and-seventy tests were taken in 2019, will likely result in a student receiving college credit for the appropriate course. A comparison, a five-year comparison, shows that we continue to have increased participation in our AP programs. The AP average scores for the last three years, 2017, we have 2.9 as the average score, 2018, 3.0, and 2019, a 2.79. Looking at potential savings for parents, at a current rate for an in-state undergraduate tuition at Rutgers being $383 per credit, given the fact that most courses will be three credits or $1,149 per class, and given the fact that each three, four, or five may be taken for credit in a college, there is a potential savings of $945,627. Yearly AP tuition savings for the last several years, we continue to see an increase, and obviously with the three, fours, and fives, we're almost at, again, a million dollars in potential savings for parents. Total AP tuition savings for Woodbridge Township School District students and their parents from 2013 to 2020 is over $5 million. I did want to explain, Dr. Zega requested, that I do have a slide demonstrating another very rigorous and great opportunity for students. We have several dual enrollment classes running as well in each of the three high schools. And the first bar graph on the upper left-hand corner represents our dual enrollment participation for students. So even though our dual enrollment numbers are going up, and more students are taking dual enrollment, we continue to add AP course enrollment as well. And the graph at the bottom combines the two, and you see that we have had over 2,500 seats taken in our dual enrollment and AP courses combined. So I would like to thank the parents of the students who participated in these classes for encouraging the rigor, the high school administration and counseling departments for helping students and guiding students to take these courses, the teachers for their great job they're doing in teaching the classes, and the students for their hard work. We're very proud of everyone involved in this program.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bader. Any comments or questions from the Board?
Do you have a chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Molnar.
Mr. Bader, are we finding that colleges are, are they making it harder for the AP to accept it? Are they, it used to be, if you had a three, that would be considered passing. Do we see a trend where colleges, because a lot of people now are starting to shift to AP, that now they're going to try to make it harder for our students to try to take advantage of it?
Mr. Molnar, it's really on a case-by-case basis. A lot of times, if, for instance, we have a student who will be an engineering major, and they're entering into an engineering program, that college may not accept credits for AP that are in the math and science area because they want to ensure that the students are taking their full sequence of classes. So it really, it really does depend on the course. And I would say, like I said before, these are projections. Not every school or university, depending on the program, will take every AP credit. But that is another reason why we do like the dual enrollment. When you take a dual enrollment class, you actually, the teacher that we have gets trained by the university. We teach a curriculum that is approved by a particular school. We participate with Syracuse University. We participate with Middlesex, NJIT, Rider, Rutgers, to name a few. And when you take a dual enrollment class, you get a transcript from that university. So sometimes it's easier to get that transfer credit accepted in the school that you go to. So it really does provide additional opportunities. But I'm happy to see that both programs are very well attended by the kids.
And I've always said that, more than the dollar amount, I think, just having these students take these AP classes to get prepared for the workload, what lies ahead, because that's the one thing I always, and I've been saying this for years, the culture shock when they get to college, and they sit at that first class, and they're given a workload that they're really not used to, and then compound that to another class and another class. So to me, it's more valuable just getting to comprehend the workload that's expected of them when they do get to college.
I agree with that 100 percent, and they actually, they both have data out there that students who take the courses in high school, regardless of whether they transfer, and even how the student did in the class, those students are more likely to stay in university level and be successful long-term. And to your point, the Syracuse classes, also, the added advantage of the Syracuse dual enrollment class is that a college professor visits every class before the end of the semester, and they talk about college life, time management, how to be successful, and those lessons are just as important as the content the kids are learning.
Thank you. Dr. Zega?
Through the chair, Mr. President. I'd just like to add, Mr. Bader, Mr. Molnar, in addition to saving parents' money, in addition to preparing for the rigor of college, the fact that students take these courses and have them on their transcripts make them more attractive candidates to get into the college. So to speak to Mr. Bader's example, a student who takes AP Calc and gets four, gets into the Rutgers Engineering School, may not get the credits for the AP course, but they would be at an advantage of being accepted into that school because they took either an AP course or a dual enrollment course. So the fact that the students are demonstrating academic rigor, regardless of what they had on their AP test, that makes them attractive candidates, and that gets them into college. The fact that we have close to 3,000 students, what we did was, took the enrollment of all the courses and then together, close to 3,000, that's really impressive. That's almost the entire enrollment of our senior class in the three high schools. So congratulations to everyone, and thank you to the Board for your support of, and continuing next year for funding one AP test fee per student, per year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zega. Are there any comments or questions from the public?
Yes, good evening. Tom Maris, Sports New Jersey. I want to thank Mr. Molnar for asking that question. It was one of the ones I was going to ask, and it was an excellent answer by Mr. Bader. Thank you very much. Just out of curiosity, on the percentages, what percentage of our graduating seniors go on to either a county college, one of the state public schools, or into a private? Do we know? Do we track them?
As I said in the last meeting, I'll repeat again, when you're done with whatever you have to say, I don't want to interfere with your five minutes, so...
No, that's, well, it's not five minutes. This is, this portion we're into now. I'm not in the open sessions, okay?
Approximately 80 percent.
Eighty percent go where? Into?
College.
College, okay. Of that 80 percent, do you have a breakdown whether they go on to a county college, and then go on further to a full-year, four-year college, or do they start with a four-year college? Do you know?
I can't answer that. Certainly, you can request it from the office, Business Administrator's office, and they'll be able to supply that.
Oh, since Dr. Bader was here, he might have been able to answer it.
Mr. Bader, do you know that answer off the top of your head?
No, but I'll be happy to get it to you, Mr. Maris.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Molnar.
I think we have seen a trend of students starting to go towards Middlesex more because of the affordability, I guess, to get those liberal arts classes, those basic classes over with. You know, some students will, you know, qualify for the Stars Program, or just for the cost savings alone, to take those early classes that you need to take at the cheaper price for the parents. So we are seeing a lot of students at our National Honor Societies, when they do the roll call of colleges and universities, a lot of them, you'll hear in Middlesex County College, and talking to some students afterwards, it does come down to a price factor for that first introduction to college.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar. Any other Board comments? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes. I abstain on item number 22, and yes on all the others.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes. Finance and Insurance Agenda, Mr. Tamburello?
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Administrator, Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following eleven items. This evening, I move for the adoption of the foregoing eleven items.
I have a motion by Mr. Tamburello. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Delapietro. Any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes, sir, Mr. Harris.
To highlight something I typically hold off until the end of meetings to highlight certain things. As many of you know, I work for the state legislature. One of the items we worked on as part of the state budget was providing another $50 million to the 600-plus school districts in the state of New Jersey to reimburse school districts for extraordinary aid. Special education funding for students who are sent out of district to meet their needs that their home public school system can't meet. Well, oftentimes, that tuition for those private operators is significantly high. If you look at the superintendent's agenda for this month, the 200-plus students that attend out-of-district placements, their tuition sometimes will range between $20,000 upwards of $100,000 for that tuition. So the state saw fit that it begin to increase meeting the needs of school districts that are paying for an increasing amount of private school tuition for special education. So I was curious. I reached out to colleagues of mine to find out how much Woodbridge, in addition to our annual state aid appropriation, how much new money we would be receiving. So I just heard today, we are receiving $614,000 more in special education, extraordinary aid, and again, that's to reimburse for tuitions that exceed $40,000 per student. That $600,000 makes us the fourteenth highest beneficiary of 600, or, I think it's 603 school districts in New Jersey. We're fourteenth in the most amount of money. And again, that will go towards reimbursing the school district to the students that we send out of district to meet their special education needs. So I wanted to highlight that, get another $600,000, which is always nice, is we pay a lot of money in taxes, through our income taxes and our corporate business tax here in Woodbridge Township. So it's always nice when we get some of that money back. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Are there any other comments from the Board? Any comments or questions from the public?
Again, Tom Maris Sports. Point number 11. And to be fair, I did, Dr. Zega and Mr. Wolfman, about this point before the meeting reconvened. It's just $232,832.50 for additional work on Woodbridge Middle School. For abatement, I'm assuming that is asbestos abatement?
Correct.
I thought it was correct. And does that have any impact on the overall, or any part of the schedule, and will that school open on time?
I will be addressing that when I make my comments before we go to the public open session.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
And Mr. Treewasser?
I abstain on number four as well. I was unable to attend that committee meeting, and was not well versed on it. Yes on all other items. Security and School Safety, Mr. Delapietro?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Security and School Safety Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Delapietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes. Technology, Mr. Sedana?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Technology Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction present the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tamburello. Any comments or questions from the Board? Any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes. Buildings and Grounds Committee Agenda, Mr. Molnar?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following. Tonight, I will be moving three items.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sedana? Roll call? I'm sorry, any Board comments? Any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes. Transportation Agenda, Mr. Velez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Transportation Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following four items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Velez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes. Personnel Agenda, Mr. Molnar?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tamburello. Any comments or questions from the Board? Any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Treeblosser?
Yes.
Personnel agenda, Mr. Mulnar?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources presents the following. Tonight, I will be moving 30 items.
I have a motion by Mr. Mulnar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bourdain? Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Treeblosser?
Yes.
Technology, Mr. Sedana?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Technology Committee on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction present the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tamburello. Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes. Thank you very much. I often spend some of this time doing shout-outs. I wanted to recognize something. Bruno, our videographer here, will be putting this on online. Excuse me, it's already on the district's website and he's going to show it during this presentation. On the district website, we have a list of the 2019, excuse me, the graduates from the 2000, the class of 2019, the list of colleges, trade schools, and military branches that our sons and daughters have enlisted in or are choosing to go to this fall. I wanted to just highlight some notable comments here. We have students enlisting in the U.S. Army, the U.S. Navy, and the U.S. Marines. We wish them well. We have 11, we have, excuse me, students attending 11 different trade schools. They include the Culinary Institute of America, Ducrette School of Art, Fashion Institute of Technology, Pratt Institute, Robert Fiance Beauty School, Lincoln Tech, Middlesex County College, excuse me, Middlesex County Vocational Technical School, so on. You can see, again, this list online. And then dozens and dozens of colleges and universities from throughout the country, both two- and four-year schools. I just want to highlight some of the world-class schools that some of our students will be rolling in in the next couple of weeks. That includes Carnegie Mellon, Johns Hopkins University, Massachusetts Institute of Technology, known as MIT, NYU, University of Pennsylvania, an Ivy League school, and the University of Virginia. We're very proud of all of our students regardless of what they choose. It's often in society, it's pushed that our students go on to college for a big four-year school. But, you know, certainly, our county college here in Middlesex County is world-class. And then, we've always wanted to stress as a board, and I know we've improved on it, is also telling our students of the alternative option of attending trade school. So it's one of the purposes of my presentation this evening. And again, I ask that you check out our list. And again, be proud of our students for the choices that they made through four years of high school and now advancing their educations beyond our doors and starting their career path. So, thank you, Mr. Treeblosser, for that latitude. And lastly, Dr. Zaga, I just wanted to make sure, the testing schedule that was a part of the policy and planning agenda, that that will be available on the district website for parents to kind of mark their calendars for when the students will be taking their SLA, formerly known as the PARC, as well as parents and students at the high school level, which SAT and ACT test they can start signing up for through those respective websites. So this, I believe you put it on the website, but if not, I respectfully request that it be added on there, so.
Next week, Mr. Harris.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And that's it for me this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Are there any other comments or questions from the board or statements from the board? Okay, in keeping with my past practice, I'm going to update everybody on what's going on in the district from an environmental and construction standpoint. School 18, the spined ceilings are down. The cleaning is completed and they will start putting up the new ceilings and be prepared for the beginning of school. School 11, Phase 1 will be completed on time and the school should open without a hitch other than the regular school opening hitches. The old building should be brought down prior to the beginning of school starting and therefore being the ability to start Phase 2, which is the gymnasium and tying in the rest of the construction. Woodbridge Middle School project, according to the contractor, will be completed on time. The administration, with the board's full support, recognizing that things go wrong with construction projects, will have posted on the website by Thursday our contingency plan and what we'll be planning on doing. Our plan, I can tell you without great detail only because it's not finalized, is it will not be a split session at Woodbridge High School. There will be a plan put in place that will offer a full and robust educational opportunity for all of our Woodbridge students. There will be no negative impact on the Woodbridge High School community. It will not impact them in any way, shape, or form. And what we have to do is work out the fine details and that will be made available to you all by Thursday. Any teachers who have questions regarding working multiple grades that they teach, that will also be addressed and resolved. And you can either reach out to the superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of We will pull this off to absolutely the best of our ability. We will provide the absolute best education to our students and I like to believe that everybody is here for that very reason. So I apologize for any inconvenience to anyone, but I assure you, we learned a lot when we went to our split sessions at School 18 and we have made some profound improvements on our processes. School 28 is moving along well and will be ready to open on time. That's it? Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing. Mr. Murgatroyd, our assistant in facilities, has gotten all his proper certifications. I know that was brought up once before and I just wanted to make sure that I shared that with everyone. So, in keeping with our past practice, we will open this portion of the meeting for statements from the public. If you have to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and the part of the township you are from you reside in for the record. And please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation 1100D. I will also not answer any questions until you are fully completed as so not to negatively impact your five-minute opportunity to speak. Thank you.
John Vataric Woodbridge. I won't take a long time. I guess a few people here I know they want to talk to. Last week I was at council meeting, asked the same questions about the School 11, would it be open on time? And councilman, who I said, well, ask the school board, ask the mayor and request the school board. But again, quite a few things are assured will be done before the opening day. Was it the 3rd of September, 4th of September? And second thing about the solar panels, they didn't either, do they, do you have a solar panels on the school or you don't? And third, I understand the old school will not be finished, completed. When the new school opens up, the old school won't be done yet. And the question would be, is it safe because of all kinds of debris, all kinds of pollution, whatever you want to call it, to be school session when you take the old building down? That's it.
Okay, so first and foremost, I told you what we know about the both 11 and Woodbridge Middle. Our expectation is they will be done on time. We will have the certificates of occupancy before we allow students in. So if for some reason they are not allowed in, then we will have our backup plans in place. As far as solar panels, I don't know if they'll be on the roof prior to the beginning of school, but at some point they will be installed. And you had one other question. The old building is projected to be down before the students arrive. And that's what they're telling us. And I am not a construction expert, so I have no reason not to believe them at this time.
But again, can I just, one more thing? You took a backup, backup plan just in case. I mean, this is only three weeks later. I understand to what you've got to report, you do have a lot of things to be done to the school. And to my knowledge, we don't get CO on it, if it's safe or anything else to put those kids in the school there. And again, if there is a backup plan, are the people going to be made aware with the dwells, in the dwells, where the kids are going to go to what schools? And are you going to just postpone it until they get CO?
Mr. Vataric, I stated all of that before I opened it up to the public. We will have our contingency plan posted. We have no reason to believe that School 11 will not be ready on time in advance. The only one we have any real question about is Woodbridge Middle and we will have our contingency plan posted for the public to see by Thursday of next week.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening again, Tom Maris, Sports New Jersey. Just following up on some of Mr. Vataric's questioning, and I want to thank the administration. They were able to get me copies of the latest scheduling on Ross Street, which was up to July 31st of this year. So I'm assuming that is the most current from your architect. And in that, it looks like there are several areas that are going to be bumping very close to the deadlines for opening the school. In fact, there's going to be much activity going on well after the school's open. And that raises a couple of questions. I know you have contingency plans, you'll be speaking to them when and if you have to. But in that, have you addressed the problem with both, twofold? Parking, because you're going to have your teachers, you're going to have your construction crews, you're going to be having deliveries there, and you're also going to have a situation with security, which is even more concern. Obviously, you're going to have a lot of insiders coming in and out. How do you verify who they are and how they're getting onto the site when we have children on-site? That's one question. At the last meeting I brought up on the curriculums, the state has mandated that schools in New Jersey will address in some fashion the LGBTQ and put it into the curriculums. You didn't have an answer at that point in time. You said you were working on it. And I see tonight that the curriculums have been approved. Have you incorporated that plan into yours? And is it a standalone and are copies available of that plan? That's my two questions. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the rest of your last question, if you don't mind repeating it.
Sure. On the curriculums, the last meeting, I brought up the state requiring schools in New Jersey to address the LGBTQ sensitivity, if you will, training in schools in some curriculum format. You were working on it at that time. Have you completed that curriculum and has it been introduced into the new school year for 2019 and '20?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Is it available for the public to review? And did you have a public comment on it at all?
As any other curriculum is available to the public, this would be available to you as well.
But it was not set out separately to ask any comments from the public?
I am not aware that we are required to ask the public for curriculum guidance for any reason other than if there is some reason that the superintendent feels that there's a special need other than the normal understanding of education. I don't know why he would form a outside committee other than using the experts in the school.
Well, even there, where do we draw upon the experts in the school who are familiar with this and where did they get their training to deal with these types of sensitive issues? Did you bring in outside psychologists, the state aide, who helped you formulate the curriculum?
Mr. Harris, we form committees to do our curriculum all the time. I have no reason not to believe that the superintendent and the assistant superintendent are not privy to what they're supposed to be doing. We have a very vast, large group of professionals in our employ and I am sure that they pulled the proper resources to get it done.
And okay, if I use the Oprah, which I will, I'm sure then you can verify what outside experts, if any, you use, if you paid any consultants, and who actually contributed to that curriculum aside from our own people. Is that correct?
Of course you can.
Yeah, and through the chair, Mr. President, just to address one of Mr. Harris's questions about public notice or public ability to comment, to the extent that any existing curriculum were revised or any new curriculum were put in place, they would have been on the agenda on your curriculum section, just like all other normal revisions. That would have been the time for the public to comment had the agendas in this district aren't published ahead of time. So if anyone had any questions, they could have asked for the curriculum at that time.
My apologies, I wasn't quite able to hear all that only because of the background noise. Could you repeat that a little bit, at least the synopsis of it?
Sure. In short, any revisions to the curriculum because of the LGBT sensitivity and awareness law that was passed recently would have been on the agenda just like any other curriculum revision due to any other state law.
Okay. Then, if I could have an answer on the first question, which was the security and parking issues that will go at the Ross Street School.
Are you, is that your last question?
Yeah, I said I only have two and that was the first of the two.
So regarding the security, I won't comment to you about security, but I will tell you that the construction project in Phase 2 is not going on in the building. It is outside of the building. And we went through construction all last year where we had construction crews, students, and teachers. We will make sure that we have things in place to execute equally as well as we did last year, which went very, very well.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? My name is Valerie Boyle. I'm from C. Warren.
Yes, ma'am.
My children go to Woodbridge Middle, or my daughter has, and my son will be going for the first time.
Yes, ma'am.
So my questions are just concern for Woodbridge Middle and what's going on. I understand and appreciate that you have a Plan B, so I don't come in with anger or frustration, just concerned as a parent, as I'm sure a lot of the people here, as our Plan B as parents.
Sure.
So that's, my questions just stem from that. I know you guys are going according to what you get. I know this isn't your intention as to, like, put us off, but we as parents need to plan our lives. So I know you're saying Thursday.
Yes, ma'am.
So at least we now know we have something to look forward to in terms of a date. But my questions are, so we were hearing, and I'm glad to know that it's not going to be a split session and so at least you put that to rest. Can we at least know that maybe, are we still going to be in the parameters of a normal time schedule? Because that at least sort of helps us plan our preparation, at least, you know what I mean? Like, are we still going to be in a normal middle school time schedule?
Similar. It's not going to be exactly the same.
But sort of fairly similar. Our kids aren't going to be in school till maybe 5:00 in the evening.
No, 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 no.
So from where my mental standpoint comes from is like, oh my God, how am I going to get my kids picked up? Do I need help? Do I need, you know, so that's where my mentality is coming from. So that would be my first, my first thought. My second question is, and I, I don't remember the name of the gentleman, but he brought up earlier some question about asbestos. My initial thinking was, did construction not just sort of go as planned? Sometimes construction takes longer than normal and that's what happened here. Or did something else get found that prolonged this construction? And you said you would touch upon that later at the end and then I didn't hear, you know, you touched upon it. So was that asbestos was found and then that's what triggered this more lengthy process? I also had the question about, I know we had last year where the kids were in school and construction was going on. That went well. And we keep saying that construction is going to be done, you know, or done, the word done. Is this the end of construction or is it going to still continue when the kids are going to be in school? Which is fine. It was just kind of trying to understand, is the project near completion or is there still more that's going on? I mean, I just don't know where the project is at, you know, really, or have an understanding. I just know kind of from what my daughter was telling me as the year went on, oh, this is happening or this is happening. So kind of just want a general idea of what more is there to be done at this school? And I think, I'm trying to remember what other questions I have. I think that was it.
Okay. So let me try and answer your questions for you now that you're complete. The schedule will be similar. I can't comment, you know, with ultimate definiti, but the plan is going to involve the kids by grade level going to different schools. That will give them a full day of instruction. The children that are going to a high school will follow the high school schedule. The kids that are going to a middle school will follow the middle school schedule. But it will not, they will not be getting out at 5:00. They will be getting, the latest will be getting out as a normal middle school schedule, which is 3:15 or 3:05. As far as the construction goes, there, the abatement went as planned. I think there were just overruns based on what they were doing, but it was all completed before the other group went in. There, the project will be done. There may be some additional renovations that are going on afterward, but of course, those will be done either when students aren't there or they will not have access to student areas. And then your last question was that, I think that was all of them.
I don't know. I don't even remember my last question.
No, I think that was all of them.
It happens, right? Oh, and one other.
Oh, the overruns. You wanted to know if there was no, it wasn't that they found a more severe issue and that's what caused it. They were, just as they were doing, you know, there were, there was additional areas that they did when they had the building closed off when there weren't people around.
Yeah. I appreciate it because honestly, like, I'm sure a lot of your parents, and we start to get like that sort of, oh, we hear, we hear this, we hear that, and then, you know...
Well, that's why we wanted, that's why the board...
And that's why we came, you know, and that's why we came.
The board was very intent on making sure...
The board was very intent on making sure-
We have extracurricular activities that aren't school-related, that we pay a tremendous amount of money for, and it's like, no, how are we going to get them to this, and how are we going to get them to that, and who's going to pick the kids up? And it gets overwhelming, so that's why, you know-
We do understand, that's why we wanted to put the rumors to rest. Dr. Zega, trying to be proactive, was letting the schools know that we were working on a contingency, and I guess at some point was asked a question about, is this possible? And he said, yes, it's possible. And from is it possible, now we're closed until December of the following century.
Okay.
So that didn't happen. Unfortunately, people blow things out of proportion. The plan that the administration put together is very comprehensive and very solid. Will it be flawless? Will there be no absolute mistakes? Yeah, there may be some little hiccups here and there, but they are prepared to put the resources in to make sure that things go smoothly as possible, and our goal is that they open on time. But if not, we want to be prepared, and we want to make sure that the public, the parents and the kids do not have any additional stress, because as you said, we're all parents and we understand what going back to school is like, and we even understand how rough middle school can be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And one completely separate question, this is probably very easy. Does anyone know when park testing scores from last year come out?
End of September.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. And the one thing too, is with the plan that's being put into place, you know, I want to thank the administration, because they're taking the couple extra days just internally questioning every scenario that could possibly come up, because we don't want to put a plan in place and then have, well, what happens if this happens, or what happens if this happens? We're trying the plan that we put in place. We want it to be, I mean, we are going to probably run into something we didn't foresee, but we're trying to get it as close to the exact plan as possible, so it's a lot of internal